Okay, I'll call the May 13th, 2014 meeting of the Acton School Committee to order at this time. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, if you'll notice that on page two, under number seven, the earlier agenda said "Celebration of Learning," but it didn't say what. It now is going to be the BAM preschool program and Department Head for the Special Teachers. And there's one other item. Under "New Business," 10-2, possible donation of curriculum, Spanish curriculum books are requests from National School.
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that the minutes be accepted as written.
May 8th or April 8th?
Pardon me?
Oh, I thought you said April. I'm looking at April.
Yeah, I meant April 8th. I said May 8th because it said May 8th on my paper. I was reading.
Oh, I was looking at the minutes.
April.
Oh, yeah.
May, yeah, April. Okay, no further discussion. If not, all those in favor, so move. Having not a lot of public, I guess not. Communication and correspondence.
Judy, I have a few comments in regards to the town meeting. Do you want me to use them as the comments for the public or do you want me to speak somewhere else?
You can go ahead and do that now, that's fine.
Okay, just want to, you weren't here, Kevin. I know you were in business or whatever. I wish you were.
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
Always good to have your voice there, but I just want to speak in regards to, it's bothered me, personally bothered me, throughout this process and especially on the town floor with, you know, I understand open town meetings, you want the school to be involved here in town for, you know, selectmen warrant finance school committee, and I understand you discuss things. That's how it's supposed to be, but Joan Nass, when she got out at that town meeting, and it was kind of offensive to me during the budget season here when she explained the school saying champagne taste on a beer budget, just kind of a dig uncalled for, threw the word Cadillac out there. And then we get to the town meeting and she made her amendment, take away $500 from a stipended position. Absolutely legal, perfectly legal what she did, but that position there that she went after, there are 42 stipended positions in the school. There are 36 stipended positions up at the town hall. There are 30 firefighters whose stipends are going to be raised this year, and they all deserve it. I'm a former firefighter. These guys all deserve it and ladies deserve it. Seventy-eight stipends, only one was mentioned. $500 out of a $5 million budget. She says it wasn't personal. I'll take her word for it. It wasn't personal. So then she goes on to say that it's about volunteerism. This particular person with his $500 stipend, first of all, my opinion, and the townspeople agreed on the floor and at the ballot. This particular person served volunteering, two years as the PTG secretary, eight years as the parent teacher rep. She planned all the fundraising activities, started all the female sports in Acton in 1995, coached three of the sports at the time when she started them, before there were even stipends. National History Day chaperone, do it after a while. And has volunteered to organize the annual talent show for eight straight years in a row, which brings this whole town together. I know Joan volunteers too, and, you know, most of the time it's up at the pancake breakfast, which is all great stuff, good stuff, but it just absolutely, absolutely bothered me. And then when she brought up there, she held the two pieces of paper up, the return on the investment, what the taxpayers get for the school members here. We understand what the, I took it at almost as, you know, she backed away from it from this one stipended position and turned it into a volunteer issue. So, she, what bothered me was, for 10 years, when I was on the board for six years before, every single time, we had more programs, we had more staff, a lot more activity going on here in the school, foreign language, she sat on that warrant finance committee and never once spoke about this school like this. Of course, that's when her husband was running for state rep and state senate, and she was going to run for state rep. What about her return of investment? When she was running for state rep, we believed, the people, that she was with the school. You can go online and look at her voting record. Joan Nass wasn't with the school. She wasn't with education. As a matter of fact, Percy Lowell, who got up at the microphone, the only person that wasn't a warrant finance member, a selectman, or a school committee member that spoke at that town meeting for the school, was Percy Lowell. He spoke twice. Once he talked about the 55% state funding that was voted by the people in 2004. Not once, the highest this legislature, the state senate and the state reps ever came was 48%. That was high for them. In fact, the only legislator around this area, I've never met him, I don't know the man, but I read his voting record, he wanted to take the profits from the casinos in Oxford, take that and bring us up to the 55%, so the taxpayers in the towns wouldn't be burdened with this, all this excess money. They weren't with him. They weren't with him. Where were these people? As a matter of fact, when they sent their flyers out, they had pictures of teachers' kids on them, you know? It just bothers me, I don't mind if you disagree, but it's the way you do it, you Percy Lowell also talked about, he got up and talked about the volunteerism, and he supported our $500. This is a guy living on a fixed income. He worked his hard out his whole life, had a tow truck company, hardworking man, had two kids, one went to Princeton and one went to MIT. The difference in Percy Lowell and some of these people is, even though he's living on a fixed income, he's in this school volunteering. You people must see him in here. He wants the same for every little kid coming through this school that his kids had. And that's what we all should be going after also. We have to stand up to this type of stuff. That was uncalled for, it didn't belong, the way it was handled on town floor, I don't care what anybody says. That's all I have to say. She's not and never was a friend of the school. She was when she was running, but not the way she voted. That's all I have to say.
Okay, and just to add to that, I think it would be a good time for us as a board to express our appreciation to the townspeople for voting our budget through and for showing the support that they have for the education that our kids are getting here. And we as a board definitely appreciate the support of the voters at the referendum vote and those who came to the town meeting. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Any correspondence?
Anything since your board packet?
Okay.
Just, I just want, just piggyback off of just what Jim is saying, just, I wasn't able to be at the last meeting and I wish I had been able to, but just a couple of quick comments in regards to, what was it, the previous budget meeting? Was it the budget meeting where?
Yes.
What had been, going through my mind was just not, going into specifics, with some of the discourse that was going on and in thinking about the conversations that were taking place, I remember some of, and there were multiple individuals that talked about, well, this should be a discussion on town floor. And what I was wondering, thinking about in my head is, well, what are we having a discussion about? And part of my interpretation of the conversation that had taken place during that budget meeting was, my belief is that it's not a discussion, that the issue at hand, even though that's what was stated, was about stipends. I don't think it's an issue about stipends. I think the conversation really was a social commentary about the value we place on teachers. And it reminds me of, again, I like research, I like looking at what's happening elsewhere, and often we're compared with other countries, and one of the countries that we often look to as a model is Finland. And Finland is actually not too different from New England, in size and a variety of things. Temperature, that's right. Snow. But over the past 15, 20 years, Finland has, it's the leader in the world in education. And we want to find, you know, what are they doing differently? The number one thing Finland is doing differently is we don't treat teachers and expect them to be volunteers. We treat them like professionals.
That they are.
And that, so if we want to have a discussion, let's have a discussion about what do we value? And I think, I appreciate being on this board because I do believe, and I speak at least personally, that I mean, what value are we going to place on teachers? And if this stipend conversation comes up, I'd like to have that conversation because it's not about $500. It's about, do we expect teachers to volunteer their free time? I know most of them already do a lot of time. So, what, how will we place a value on it? I was very appreciative of the fact that due diligence was given to the stipend conversation. It was looked at, there was one amount, it was discussed, and that is what was considered fair. So I was appreciative of the due diligence, but I think it's important to point out what the real conversation was. It was about how do we value teachers? And I don't think this would happen. I don't think our students would, here at Acton, would be excelling and exceeding and be one of the best schools in the state if it weren't for the teachers and what they do, and I'm thankful for that.
And then there were also comparisons that were made, that comparing the results of kids today, how beautiful everything was and how great the kids did in the four-room schoolhouse. Well, the four-room schoolhouse was 40 years ago. The flag that hung in a four-room schoolhouse, well, that same flag hung at town hall, where the town clerk did all the business in her living room out of a shoebox. The same flag hung up at the dump, where they dug a big hole and you came and threw your trash and covered it over. They didn't know what recycling was. Things have changed. There's been no child left behind, there've been mandates. I mean, it sounds good to people that want to listen to that, but it makes absolutely zero sense. Nothing. Zero value.
So I second what you said, Judy, in the sense of, I think the vote, if I remember correctly, that we voted to for the $500?
Yes, we did.
For me, that's a statement that the Town of Acton, the voters who were there, are voted to say, we agree with the concept of treating teachers like professionals. And I think that's important.
And I think we also tried to mention at that meeting that we appreciate all the volunteer hours that teachers do put in on a regular basis that
They're innumerable.
People don't even know about. Okay, let's move on with our agenda, shall we? Superintendent's report.
Okay. I echo the fact that we are very appreciative of the fact that we had not a large turnout, but a very significant three-to-one plurality turnout, but we're not taking that for granted in any way, because our administrators are going to continue the quest for continuous improvement in how we assist our students with their intellectual, physical, and emotional growth. In other words, just because there are folks that think we're doing a good job doesn't mean that we're doing the best job we can. So that's the mantra that I'm suggesting, that we continue to improve in every way. One of the things that shows that we're trying to stay on top of things, the Department of Education gave our special ed department quite a good rating, and I'll let, in a few minutes, Joy talk about that. Just to be brief, a little bit on facilities. Facilities, we finally got the baseball and softball teams out, and it was wonderful to have weather that was somewhere near helpful to them, but of course, when they noticed that there was an odd smell, Mr. Grazer and I went out to check that out, and in his report, he will talk about that odd smell and what we'll probably be doing about.
Good times here at Acton.
It's all about the odd smells.
Right. Anyway, and Mike Corey has some exciting news too. Not that Andy's news isn't exciting, but Mike Corey has some exciting news, as in good news, in his tech report about the new Apple laptops he's giving to each teacher. And, but tonight, it's a very important thing to us to recognize that we had a new initiative this year called BAM, and Kami Davis will bring us up to date on the success of this year's new pre-K program, and it's part of our celebration of learning in just a few minutes. And I'm very pleased that the school committee is working diligently, besides the regular meeting that we have once a month, we're meeting monthly on strategic planning and goal setting, and we had another meeting this evening from 5:00 to 6:00 that was very productive, and I want to thank the whole board, as well as one board member in particular who keeps us going in the right direction, Kevin. Thank you. But I am also requesting a not-too-length exec session tonight to talk about some employee contracts. So that's what I have, and thank you very much, and my team is ready to communicate any of these things that I started to communicate about.
Okay, progress monitoring reports? Anything?
I'll go to the principal's report, which will have some.
Skip on, we'll have some of that in it. Okay. Principal's report.
Well, along with the progress monitoring was Kristen's reporting out of NWA NECA longitudinal data. We are now, once again, in testing mode. The MEA science tests are given out at the fifth and eighth grade level, so that, those were occurring this past week. And again, it's a window of opportunity that overlaps also with the spring NWEA tests. This year, second grade is trying them this spring to see how they do, more of a practice round, but that is great, up to grade eight, and that is done in the reading, the language arts, and the math. And again, these are tests taken on the computer. Students get their scores immediately, and, you know, the teacher gets a staff computerized information paper as well. Students take these pretty seriously, and, you know, really pleased with the efforts and attitude towards the tests. They like, they like scoring well. It is something that matters to them. Throughout my conversations with staff over the last couple of weeks, has been on the standards of proficiency-based report cards. Ken and I are meeting with some of, excuse me, administration on Friday afternoon with Sanford to try to find out what they're doing, not just at the high school level towards a proficiency-based diploma, but the grades leading up, the K to 8, what does it look like? How are they making the transition to standards? A lot of conversation at the staff level, bless you, about, you know, understanding it and letting go of things that we've done in the past, because that's what we're comfortable with, that's what we know. Really need to look at this as a continuous conversation. Before we change a report card, we need to talk about what we're reporting out, what's the best method of letting parents and the community know how our students are achieving. So again, I encourage school board members to be in on those conversations, there'll be times in the next year to really look at this, and, you know, how do we transition? Very excited about our opportunity to talk with the Sanford administration about what they are doing, what they see they'll be doing in the future. It's a real challenge philosophically, not just practically, to really shift away from what we have considered to be the traditional grading system. Yeah, I mentioned in my report, visit from the Kennebunk Animal Shelter, kindergarten screening. We are, we have screened, I think, 20 students so far. We've got a few others on the list that haven't been screened yet, so we are tipping over that number, so we have to talk about that. I mentioned it later on as well with the class sizes. It's like a roller coaster ride, and I haven't, this is my fifth spring in this position, and it's the same every year. We're moving and shifting, and numbers are going up here and down there. So we really need to talk about, I know Ken's got a report on that projected data, so I'll wait for that period to have a deeper conversation about what we see and where we think it's going to impact us. Inviting you, of course, to June 13th, eighth grade graduation. It's a Friday evening, our last day of school is going to be the Monday, June 16th, so we'll have graduation on the Friday night. Ken shared with the teachers, "Who Moved My Cheese?", there are four books being rapidly passed around the school as teachers are trying to, you know, get a handle on how they feel about different changes and different things in their, not just professional, but personal life too, but it's making for good conversation. You mentioned a topic, you might find yourself as one character, and then a different topic, you might find yourself as a different character in the book, and just really gets you, gets you reflecting again. PTG, you know, we talk about how great this school is. The parent teacher group has probably got to be one of the most amazing group of small numbers and dynamic results. They went above and beyond all last week, making the staff feel appreciated, very thoughtful gifts, and it just made it a little more fun. My last report, since this was printed last week, it had us waiting for Sandra Packard's newest child. I'm happy to report, she has given birth to her second child, her son, and he was born on Friday. I don't think she'll mind, I'll say that he was 12 pounds, two ounces.
Unbelievable.
It's very healthy, and we care that mom and baby are doing well. Any questions? You can see the upcoming, the events are going to, that list is just going to grow, the upcoming things going on.
And Mrs. Reeves is with us until the end of June.
Mrs. Reeves has found her niche once again.
She's enjoying herself.
Oh, it's so awesome.
Yeah.
Is that Pat Reeves?
Yeah.
Pat Reeves, yes, is Sandra's long-term sub. She was able to meet with Sandra a couple of times before the transition, but certainly she is very knowledgeable. So, easy transition for us.
Good, good. Anybody have any questions for Trish? If not, I'll ask Joy to give her report.
Okay. As Mr. Aldrich reported, we received a commendation from the Department of Ed, the Office of Special Services commended us for our high level of performance demonstrated on our district data and records. Based upon the review of data from 2013 school year, they determined that our school administrative unit has received the designation of needs requirements for that school year in implementing the requirements of the Individuals with Disabilities Act. And three sets of factors were considered, performance on compliance indicators in the state performance plan, compliance on required reporting timelines, and adherence to regulatory requirements. Data for the measures were compiled from our child find data, local entitlement application records, and program review files. And this is a little different than the, we're so pleased to get this, but we have the audit, and we will report on that. There typically, there is always a corrective action plan in every school district, and we're anticipating that we will have some things to fix, so, but we're really pleased with the overall report. So the audit really looks at formatting of the IEP dates and things like that, some specific details that we may have to, that we are, you know, we will need to correct. Also, on our early release day, we continued with the safety care training for the two hours that we had available to us, and then we will do an additional training after school to complete that certification for those, they will have completed the certification, those ed techs that participated. And then I wanted to report on the extended school year. We will have an extended school year summer program this year, starting on July 7th and ending July 31st. Approximately 12 students are participating, and again, it's Monday through Thursday from 8:30 to 11:30, and we serve breakfast only this year, as we did last year. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions about anything I reported on.
And that breakfast, that free breakfast is open to anybody in the community, right?
Actually, they've cut back on that.
They have cut back on that?
They have cut back on that. And because we do that in conjunction with the Sanford department, the school department, Holly has, we no longer have the funds to support the whole community in breakfast and lunch, and so it's just for the students.
Just for the summer school students.
Sanford having their usual meals down there, though?
The free breakfast and lunch?
I cannot answer that question, but I can certainly research.
Oh, that's all right. They'll put the sign up there on the lawn, yeah? Effective that.
Curtis Lake Church has a free dinner every Monday night. It's packed.
Yeah.
150 people.
Whizzes?
Every Monday night. Curtis Lake, different churches, they pick different nights, but it's been the last six, seven, eight weeks, 120, 150 people packed for free dinners. That just shows you some of, you know.
What some of the needs are.
Well, unfortunately, we have that need here in town too, but the local people have never really taken advantage of those free meals, so you can't plan and prepare for a lot of people if you're not going to have anybody come. And I think, you know, the geographical setting of the community and distance probably plays a big, big factor in that.
Would've been interesting to know how many of them attend the Sanford ones, though, correlate like a shopping trip with the same night. Interesting to know how many of them are accessing other resources.
Anybody have any other questions for Joy?
Nope.
One thing that I didn't see here, but I heard of, is that we met AYP. Is that correct? Did somebody just tell me that?
The report will come out on Thursday. It appears that the preliminary shows we have, yes.
Good. Okay, let's move on to Kim.
Thanks. I actually have my report, I didn't have it in time for your packet, but I do have some copies, if you'd like them. Basically, the month of April brought a successful conclusion to next year's budget process by approving the school budget, which I definitely do appreciate, so, and I do appreciate the support of the Town of Acton and what it has provided to the school department. With the conclusion of the budget process, my time is now shifting to keeping the current budget within its fiscal constraints, and I'm accomplishing this by working with each individual person and making decisions. Basically, we have three sets of warrants to go to till the end of June, and following through, making sure that we were able to cover everything and we stay everything in the black. So that's my goal for the next three cycles, anyway. The other thing in the first part of April, I also attended a workshop with Domeno Woodson. This is also filling the other part of my job besides the accounting, which is the human resources. And that was a full-day seminar, and it was really informative, especially regarding employees and handling those types of situations. And I did like a four-page summary of what actually came out of that and shared that with the rest of the administrative team. I think as long as everybody has the same format, it makes things work a lot smoother. In the central office, we are getting ready to do our first set of testings with payroll, probably starting tomorrow. We're going to start with a small group set, and over the next three pay cycles, again, we'll get it to the point where by the third one, we'll have completely moved everything over. And we do have, at the end of this month, our audit coming up. It's a preliminary audit to get ready before July 1st. So my goal is to make it a one to a one-and-a-half day audit, and that, no more. So I'm pretty concerned that that'll happen. We did receive some really good news, that the Title I summer program that we supplied a grant for, we did receive, so that's really good. Lisa Dwyer's already starting, I'm making sure she has the program in place. She's reviewing the kids as they're going through the kindergarten screening to see, you know, which kids might really benefit from a summer reading program, so. So that was really good news. The second The second half of April, I wasn't here, I was in England, and my son got married.
Becoming a mother-in-law, right?
Yes, I did. I gained a daughter, so that was good. But what was really good, another benefit, is I did a lot of cross-training with Crystal in the central office and making sure everything ran pretty smooth. And when I got back, to know that I had four questions on a pad of paper, and took me about a day to get everything right up to speed again, I was like, I was very happy. So, and Crystal was very comfortable with how that whole timeframe went, so that, to me, is a good thing.
Yes, very good thing.
More please, Sue, that Crystal's taken on some after-hours work as the coach of the softball.
I've heard, that's so nice. Yeah, she's doing really well, too, so, but yeah, so that's my report.
Any questions for Kim?
Any pictures? No, Kim.
Thank you very much, Kim. Andy, facilities.
Okay, here we go. As Ken mentioned, we, and you've probably seen in my report, I discovered a broken sewer line between the tank and the leach field. The line's approximately ninety feet long. There's actually two lines that run from the tank to the leach field. There's two separate pumps, one on each line. So, when I discovered the leak, I knew that it wasn't something that we could let go because it was actually coming out of the ground. So, I pumped the tank to buy us some time to make sure that no more water could be discharged through the pipes. I had Bernard Yetton come down and open the ground up to see if we could find the break in the pipe. Unfortunately, the pipe is very deep, but we were very close to finding where the break was. After doing some more research and some more exploring, we opened up the distribution box out at the leach field and determined that the break was significant to one of the leach fields and that there was not a break to the other leach field. Once we discovered this, we both thought it best to leave the broken pipe for now and shut that line off and run on one pump for the remainder of the school year, because actually doing the repair on the pipe, it could be a one-day repair, or it could be several days, depending on how far we have to go before we actually find the break. So, the good news is, is it didn't interrupt any of the operation of the school. Bad news is, obviously, it's an unanticipated repair. The other good news that came out of it was a good look at our leach fields, because our leach fields are over twenty years old now, looking at the life expectancy of the leach fields, knowing that they're both in good shape, hoping that the repair will not be real expensive, and that's this month's unexpected catastrophe.
Who does this work? I mean, who do you call, who does?
GNF Septic is the one that does all of our pumping, so I had them come and pump the tank, and Bernie, Bernard Yetton, will be the one to come and dig and find where the break is and repair that section of pipe. So, it's just, it's a piece of PVC pipe, the materials are inexpensive, it's the cost of the labor to do the digging, and, you know, hopefully, you know, when I realized that it was actually coming out of the surface of the ground, I was hoping that it wasn't very deep. We dug a test pit approximately, I don't know, eight to ten feet in diameter, fourteen to fifteen feet deep, and we still didn't find the pipe. But we marked the location, we know that we were close to it, but, you know, like I said, knowing that we can run on half of the system comfortably for the remainder of the year, it won't interrupt any of the athletics, you know, because we have so many events coming up between now and the end of the school year, I didn't want to tear up, you know, the fields and have any disruption out there if we could avoid it, so. After talking with both Bernard and, you know, talking with Ken, we thought that that was the wisest decision, so. And then the other depressing piece in my report, which I included this month, was our oil consumption for the year. We haven't burnt this much oil since I've been here. We budget and contract the twenty thousand gallons. We went over the twenty thousand gallons significantly, and I was able to talk to the customer service person at CN Brown, and normally what happens is if we exceed that budgeted amount or that contracted amount, it goes to what they call rack price, and rack price is gonna be whatever the market brings, so obviously the market is more than the three-nineteen we contracted for. However, she said that since it was above delivery, that they would honor the three-nineteen pricing for the amount that we went over, so. And knowing that, the other thing Kim and I talked about today was monitoring, you know, the operations and maintenance accounts, and if the money is there and available and CN Brown is still willing to honor that price, it might be in our best interest to top the tank off like we typically do every year, because we don't know what will happen with next year's contract, so.
See if you can get me that price, too.
Bring the cherry jug down.
So, that's it, that's all the excitement for me this year.
Sounds like enough. You've got one of your staff off honeymooning this week, huh?
He is a Dominican Republic right now.
Oh, that's good.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Andy?
No, thank you.
Michael.
All right. As was mentioned, the NWAs started this month. We got off to a lumpy start. I take most responsibility for that, I apologize, but there was also a server client glitch, technical issue, but since then, testing has continued smoothly without any hiccups. For, I've been preparing for 2014 deployment, and I'm trying my hardest to develop, with the new deployment will require new infrastructure, completely new infrastructure, new server, new way to connect to it, everything's new. So, I'm trying to develop seamless, a seamless transition from what we have now to the new system, and that's coming along pretty smoothly, I hope. But with the 2015, 2014, 2015 deployment, I have reallocated my entire budget to align with the strategic plan of the draft, strategic plan we have set forth, and I'm hoping to deploy new laptops to all teachers, new MLTI devices to all teachers. And with the new MLTI devices in the teachers' hands, it opens up the door to free professional development for all teachers. So, I've been meeting with all of the teacher Common Core planning times to discuss this, explain to them that they'll be getting a new device, and that this is opening up the door and the opportunity for professional development. So, I'm gonna be taking surveys, collecting data, finding out what they want to learn, what they feel is best, giving them recommendations, and then move forward with the professional development team from the state to organize time to do this. That's big, next year's deployment. With that, it gives us a lot of devices, laptops, to distribute throughout the school for kids, so fifth and sixth grade will have one-to-one, I'm sure of, K through four, yeah, K through four will have, I'm hoping to put at least four devices in their classrooms, each of their classrooms, so they'll have a little computer center again where they can do their enrichment lessons. And with more devices, we have, I've rolled over to a new content filtering system that is much more aggressive at filtering inappropriate content, and that brought forth a lot of complaints because they can't go to Facebook or access inappropriate websites, so it's working. My goal with this new filtering system is to put it on the devices, so seventh and eighth graders should bring their laptops home, will also, will be filtered when they're home, too, and the content and what they're trying to access will be logged even when they're not here at the school, so. When they're trying to access inappropriate stuff at home, I'll be able to, you know, dig through the log files and find out what's going on. Technology committee, I haven't really, nothing new to report on that, and with research and communication with the students and the teachers, I've, I've come to the decision to go with iXL as the standards-based assessment tool that we'll use next year, and I've also budgeted for Language Arts two through eight, so we'll have math, K through eight, and Language Arts two through eight for iXL standards-based assessment.
Yes.
I heard that. And that is all I have to report.
How were teachers using iXL in the classroom?
They use it as an enrichment tool in computer lab a lot of times, they'll come in and they'll have them target.
Areas?
Yeah, areas that they want to enhance in their lessons.
To practice?
Yep, remedial as well, reteaching.
Is there, is that something, those accounts, is that something students can practice at home, or is it just a site-based license?
They use it on, they can log in from home.
They can log in from home.
If you want the data, I can give it to you.
That'd be good.
Watch out, Sylvia.
Now we'll have Language Arts data, too, so.
Anybody else have any questions for Mike? No. Sounds good, Mike.
Did you say twenty kindergartners or twenty?
We'll talk about that shortly.
Talk to me tomorrow and I'll change the number.
I'm just gonna update my spreadsheets for next year.
Okay. Upcoming data, do we have anything into that, or other than what we've already read through our reports? No.
Probably just what we got at our meeting.
What we got, yeah.
Yeah, what we got at our meeting, absolutely. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the celebration of learning with the BAM preschool.
I gotta get that thing back on.
Wait, wait, what were you doing?
Wait.
What's that doing?
The remote doesn't work anymore, it's the projector for the screen.
Oh.
Nice.
While I'm making this tomorrow, I'd just like to say thanks for joining me, and I really enjoyed hearing all the supportive comments, and I'm going to share them with my colleagues, so it's great to make that work, appreciated, and we always feel that way, but passing the budget on the first round was also a relief for all the staff, so that was great. I'll also tell you that even though I've been teaching for twenty-nine years, my youngest students were five years old, and facing the fact that teaching, working with three and four-year-olds was, I was petrified, so. After you watch my two-and-a-half-minute little show, you'll see that they were harmless and we had a lot of fun, so.
Thank you.
That's the plan. We're gonna do an exit survey with the parents that have been attending, get their input on that. We're also looking for ways to reach out to more kids, you know, find, I think we found most of the pre-K kids in Acton that were able to get here, but there's certainly more out there. We had two daycares that came regularly, which was really lovely, but both of them have, one of them just closed, which is unfortunate, and it was actually staffed by a former student, so, yeah, we're gonna keep hoping. Any way that you can think of or support to get the word out, we would appreciate that, too.
Is it on the website?
No, we kept pressing pause, it's been in the.
Now, that's where the young ones go, to look, the parents of the young ones. Word of mouth has been, has been very positive.
It has been very positive, absolutely.
I did go with my grandson once, because I had to experience it, and it was wonderful, but I work full-time plus, so I can't, and I'm trying to get my daughter to go.
That's our challenge.
Is that something, is that something we can advertise on the public radio, the public TV Xs?
I think we did.
I don't know what the rules are on that.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely, we can continue.
I go, now, Liz, you have to know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Music had Judy and Mary chair dancing for what the, whatever that matters.
I know.
Was that Travis playing the guitar?
It might have been.
Yeah, that was Travis.
Yeah. He plays the drums and the guitar at the same time.
That's pretty good.
Okay, let's go on to committee reports. Anything from the long-term planning?
Not this evening, but Mary and I talked about the importance of picking up the ball next month or at some point in the very near future.
Usually we meet before the school committee, but we've had the other meeting, meet, so.
Don't blame me, go ahead.
No.
You guys need to start going on trips with Kevin, see if he can talk on the plane and.
Yeah, that's it.
And how about the policy committee?
Well, it's the same, kind of the same story, but we've been busy with the budget, so, but I was gonna wait till this time and.
Is there, do you wanna set a time for June?
Sure.
Want to do it right now?
Sure.
Get it done.
Little book out.
Not available the sixteenth of June, not available.
No, before that, before the meeting.
Before the meeting, I'm sorry, yes, that's right.
Are we meeting already for the other?
What about the week of the second, what do you got?
The week of the second in June? I'm in New Mexico.
You see, so.
The rest of the month is better though.
Skyping, what time can you Skype?
I could Skype in in New Mexico.
What time, give them a time.
If you like.
I'll work, I'll work with Jeanette on, if we know that you're, you're Skypable on a certain day, we'll see. Jeanette doesn't know her schedule yet either, so.
Okay, then let me know and then, okay.
Skypable?
June, I'm better, June's a better, I'm trying to, I blocked off some free time, family time.
I'll know in the next couple of days.
All right, we'll talk.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's go to unfinished business. Second reading of the volunteer policy, we're going to table that until after the committee meets.
Sounds good.
So they wanna make a motion that we table that second reading until the policy committee meets.
So moved.
Second.
We moved and seconded that we table the second reading of the volunteer policy for the policy committee meeting as held. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, let's move on to new business. First of all, ten-one, tentative teacher classroom assignments for fourteen fifteen.
All right, this is an interesting topic that has, we just broached or talked about very briefly in Tricia's report. So I have something that you saw in your packet, which was the rolling enrollment for the next six years at Acton, but even since I have sent it to you as of last Thursday or whatever, I've updated it again based on some information that was given to us by Tricia and by Mrs. Pease. So what I'd like to pass out to everybody is the sheet that you had before, which is the one on top, and one week later, not even week later, some of the excitement that it caused and created when even more students are possibly joining us. Thank you, sir. What I'd like to say is we were under the impression that, based on the information we had been hearing from Town Hall and so on, that it probably wouldn't be good to, to target more than nineteen per year in the way of new student enrollments from kindergarten on through for the next few years because the birth rate doesn't seem to have been showing much more than that, if that, even if, even that amount seemed to be a little bit of a stretch. But, so, so if you look at the first chart, the one that happened to be in your packet, you saw that we were expecting nineteen students to come into kindergarten in the fourteen, fifteen year. And that's the, basically the same chart that you would have seen several weeks before when I, when we talked about the subject before. But now, if you look at the second section of this, which is updated as of today, and the kindergarten screening that took place on five-seven, we now know for sure that we have twenty, but at this early stage, if we already have twenty kindergartners, it could very easily be twenty-two by summer's end. And the other difference that I wanted to put in here is the fact that now we know the sixth grade next fall not, will not be twenty-six students, but twenty-eight students. So what we did is we put in one more student in fourteen, fifteen in kindergarten and two more students in the sixth grade. And our, our number still is a little less than the current year, it's one ninety-six, but at least it's not a large decrease. But what it brings to us as a discussion point is we now are looking at possibly more than twenty kindergarten students and should we consider two sessions of kindergarten? And also, we're looking at twenty-eight students in the sixth grade. And given that that number is, could be a challenge for one teacher, we are also suggesting that we have not budgeted for any more teachers than we currently have. So if we haven't budgeted in the next year for more than the thirteen regular classroom teachers, how would we configure the classes in such a way that we could still have thirteen regular education teachers? So what I gave you is two scenarios, fourteen, fifteen A and fourteen, fifteen B. And that's based on some discussions we've had with teachers and, and some work that's been done by Tricia on trying to see how she would staff and keep the same number of student, of, of teachers in total. It could very easily call for two teachers to teach kindergarten if we have more than twenty or if we have twenty. And how would we take care of the twenty-eight sixth graders and still keep the middle school concept of separate subject areas and separate teachers? So these are two scenarios that will be considered, nothing's cast, nothing's put in, imprinted or nothing's cast in stone yet, but what we're asking the board to think about is what your suggestions are. Kindergarten is twenty too many for one teacher, is twenty-two definitely too much for one teacher, is twenty-eight in the sixth grade too much for one teacher? But if we did that and kept the same number of students, same number of teachers, thirteen, maybe it would require a different configuration for the seventh and eighth grade where we have small numbers. So we're open to suggestions from the board about how they feel, given the budget constrich, constraints that we have. What, what types of triggers do you think would create more than one kindergarten teacher or more than one sixth grade teacher?
I, I think our policy is if we have more than nineteen, correct?
I thought it was twenty.
At the kindergarten, more than twenty, more than twenty at the kindergarten level.
Is it a guideline or a policy?
Policy, I believe.
I'm not sure.
I forgot what it was, but that was in.
But it's been, we've always had more than one teacher if we had more than twenty kids in kindergarten.
So we've had twenty screened and we have a set of twins that we're waiting to hear back from. So should the parents call back real away, right away, I would know of twenty-two. So it impacts, you know, assignments, it impacts responsibilities for the teachers, but it also impacts even who goes where in what room.
Well, the other thing is, is to have, if it, if it is, stays at twenty, whatever, because it's above twenty, we usually have two teachers. I was gonna say, I don't, I wish I had it in front of me what, how it's written, but, you know, if it is twenty-two, I don't know why a teacher in an ed tech three couldn't work that class in one class.
You talking about kindergarten?
Yeah.
Or are you talking about grade six?
Kindergarten. It's an option. I gotta, I gotta.
Yeah, I, I know we went that route one year.
But we hit twenty in January, it was a different.
It was a different, it was a different scenario because we really, I think.
It's not the ideal. It's a lot of little bodies.
I, I think that trying to put that many in one room with, is, is really pushing it a little bit, especially I think when you realize from the demonstration that we had a couple of weeks, you know, last month from Sylvia, all the different things and activities that they're doing, all the different learning experiences that they're having in kindergarten now, it's not like it used to be for sure. And I think we definitely need to think about, my, my opinion is that we definitely should have two kindergarten teachers, we should plan on two kindergarten teachers and configure for that because you, you know, you've already got twenty and we always get more after, after the initial, we always get more, very, I mean, you don't get less very often, but we often, often get more by the time school starts. So it's definitely gonna be up over that and I think, you know, I think that's a, that's the starting point and it's a very important area where they need to get the foundation and.
Is there an ed tech available if it comes to that, maybe with the scenario?
Oh, I don't know, I'm just wondering, you know.
If we came to that, we'd, we'd probably have to try to find money.
But I mean, you know, the B solution looks like the solution then. I mean, if you have twenty-one, a teacher with twenty-one is better than a teacher with twenty-eight. I mean.
Right, but the challenge of that is the departmentalize of the subjects.
Right, seven and eight.
Right, the ripple effect of seven, eight is, is a challenge. And that's what, one of my questions was, what Ken had asked, was, you know, the guideline versus policy.
That we don't have a guideline on. I mean, a policy on.
Okay, because it was changed specifically to help the kids transition into high school.
Right.
So.
I just remember seeing it written somewhere with the kindergarten twenty, over twenty. I know it's written somewhere.
Right.
Maybe in the minutes of a meeting, so I don't know if it was a policy.
When I first came on the board, that was one of the first things I learned from Brian Beeler's leadership was that anything over twenty went kindergarten, went to.
Which section of the policy menu would it be?
I don't know, but it's, it's in the minutes of a meeting somewhere that we voted on. So that's probably where you, I don't know.
It may not be an actual policy, I think it may be a protocol that we set that we've followed for many years. I think that is more likely that it's, it's probably called.
Right, because you want it to be able to change your mind, you have to change the policy. No, I don't think so.
Should be.
Well, I know, but the thing is that, that would take a lot of time to change, well, I suppose you could change a policy in an instant.
Well, we can make a decision, but we can put it on the agenda for down the road, use this as an opportunity to have a conversation, but.
So there would be.
So this juncture, what do you need to decide?
What would be the, what would be the possibility of, of departmentalizing the sixth grade along with the seventh and eighth grades?
Well, when highly qualified teachers came through with A, with, I think, NCLB, we had to prove, and I say we because I was still in the classroom at that time, we had to prove that we were highly qualified in our specific area that we predominantly taught in. So when the seventh and eighth grade was departmentalized, it's been eight, ten, twelve years, I don't know, it was under Kyle, that, that the transition was made. And so each one of the teachers that are currently in that grade and subject area had to prove highly qualified. Whereas Guy LaBranch was under a different category of elementary ed, you had to be highly qualified again in the content and grade level that you taught most of the time. The challenge I'm facing with this crazy population shift is for most of the staff, they, it says they're certified K to eighth, but they're really not highly qualified. It's not like you can take an eighth grade teacher who's been doing, well, like Dave, something, you know, not that he wouldn't look good at the kindergarten level, but, but tossing him down, you know what I mean?
It's a good thing.
I only have so much movement with their certification and they're highly qualified. The challenge with, with the sixth grade is it's almost neither fish nor fowl right now. We really would have to know, I really need to know what the boundaries are set from, from the, that's why I really need to know whether it's guidelines or policy, you know, not just for this year, but how do we handle this shift?
I don't think it ever was policy though, I think we were just discussing way back.
You know, and, you know, it has been such a positive impact on those seventh and eighth grade students, you know?
But it's sort of a one-year anomaly this year because of those twenty-eight, more so than the kindergartners, because when they get to be seventh and eighth graders, those twenty-eight can be well handled, well taught by the significant specialists in those areas.
Right, so, so how, I guess that's one of the questions is I need to know from the school board, you know, is there room for any addition in the next year's budget? And are we then, if not, you know, are we then left to try to configure as best, having the seventh and eighth grade content-specific teachers help handle the sixth grade? You, you now got five teachers, but they're not all equally qualified to teach all the subjects. So as I said, I said to one of the staff groups last week, this is what we call unfun math, you know, for me to keep figuring out every, this is the fifth year in a row that I have had to try to figure out how to repurpose people and not keep moving somebody year after year. So that's the other thing, is that I don't mind change and I think it's healthy.
Because of a variance in numbers, is that?
Because they're that dramatic. You know, for so many years we had the double classes coming up through, there was predictability and stability. Sometimes that leads to people being stuck in the same class all the time and that may not always be healthy, but to make somebody change a grade or subject level repeatedly three or four years in a row is also not healthy. So my concern is making a decision that is healthy and the best needs for children, Patty's laughing, she's been one of my permanent volunteers, but, you know, so I'm really trying to help make this decision based on what your philosophy and your policies dictate. And then we have to go back to the drawing board and look at our students, but also the, the staffing.
No. I know this is, you know, kind of an old-school thing, but my, my feeling would be to go with A, which means that there would be a sixth grade teacher that had twenty-eight students. Not, not, no, you know, and I think sometimes you take into consideration too what, how that population is made up of the sixth grade class.
This would be the class that had been part full and part multi-age. So this would be the first year that they would be combined.
Combined together.
So we don't know how they would do as a whole group.
So there's no way of really knowing that.
What's the state mandate as to class size?
There isn't any.
I thought there was.
It's a one to twenty-four overall ratio.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not individual. So you do the entire staff and divide it.
No, that doesn't make sense.
So that doesn't help us at all.
I guess what I was, I guess what I was saying was, is this a class that has a lot of, kids with a lot of issues? If you're looking at, at, you know, kids that are problematic, then twenty-eight can be in a daunting number. If you're looking at kids that are focused or can focus and, you know, it would make a difference, then they could be in one classroom together. Maybe, maybe we could look at, at providing some assistance through an ed tech or something for that particular class. That might be another possibility that we could look at. Would be, it would be a lot cheaper than hiring one of the teacher and, and the class could stay together and, I don't know, what does everybody else think?
Well, if an ed tech would work there, I mean, that would be the place to put it and not in kindergarten. I mean, kindergarten I would think would need two teachers.
So if you did get an ed tech, how would you find the money for that?
There's a little bit of breakage, not dramatic, but there's a little bit of breakage in, when I say breakage, we're, we're aware that we're gonna underspend this year's budget just a little bit.
But that breakage would carry the whole year along and the kids wouldn't lose out at all?
It might mean, it might mean some moving of some monies halfway through the year when we found that we might have to move, as I say, some moving, moving monies from.
Can you move this forty-six thousand dollars or does that have to be for capital expenditure?
That's capital.
That's all capital.
That's something else.
So. I guess I'd like to know. I guess I'd like to know what, what you recommend, what you would, what your recommendation might be as far as. I, I agree that, you know, the way we have the junior high set up now with the seventh and eighth grade has been going really well and, you know, it was quite a transition when we moved into that, but since we've moved into it, it's gone really well. And I'd kinda hate to see that messed up by trying to pull somebody out of that to take on some different responsibility. If you had, you know, enough so that everybody could, enough subjects so that everybody could do their own subject, that would be one thing. But you don't really, so I kinda would not favor scenario B for that reason, because you're pulling somebody out of something that's working really well. And trying to invent something else that you don't know is gonna work that well.
And that is my fear. That is my fear that we're, we're coming up with and the teachers have been working on being very creative thinking outside the box of how do we address this issue? You know, so I wanna make that clear that, that the sixth, seventh and eighth grade teachers have been looking at it this way, looking at it that way, you know? And I said, you know, before we can really make these final decisions, I really needed to know where the policy, where the boundaries are from the school board so that we don't cross something I didn't know existed.
I don't think there are boundaries. I just think we need to, we need to figure out what's gonna work best. What's gonna work best within the system that we have. It does, you know, I don't think it's, that we need a really, a policy to figure this out. I think we need to look at the kids, look at the staff. Where our strengths are and what can we do to make, to make it work from that perspective rather than say, well, let's just look at numbers and take this number, put this number here.
Right.
I think, you know, this is one of those times where we can't just look at the numbers. We have to look at the makeup of the class. We have to look at.
Needs.
At, at the needs of the class. We have to look at who the sixth grade teacher will be.
If I leave the sixth grade class intact, then I would be looking at an educational plan that is different in order to still give better ratio for adult to student. You know, I don't want a one to twenty-eight ratio all the time.
When, when do we need to make a decision, Buck?
Well, the teachers are gonna kind of, teachers are kinda gonna wanna know pretty soon what's going on. You know, but.
And the current sixth grade teacher has visited this issue with Tricia. Knowing that twenty-eight or twenty-six, the number was before, was within the realm of possibility. That's the best way to put it.
I don't think you should touch seventh and eighth grade. I don't think.
Even though they're very small numbers.
Right.
That's a whole different world.
Even though, because the numbers are going up next year. I mean, you can always, already see that next year you're gonna have twenty-eight in the seventh grade and.
Right, and you'll have twenty-five and twenty-eight.
Then you'll be messing, messing with it again and I don't think we really wanna do that. That's just my, that's just my feeling.
I agree.
This is working well and we're getting good results and our kids are going off to high school very well prepared. And I think part of it, a good part of it is because we went to this format of departmentalizing the seventh and eighth grades a few years ago and, and it gives them more concentrated areas with, with specific teachers and I, I think that works very well and I think, I don't really think we should mess with that. That's.
The seven and eight thing?
Right.
Question, so if I'm reading this correctly, is the two propositions that we're seeing an increase in kindergarten in sixth grade, correct? Kindergarten might go higher, but as a way we're looking at it now with these numbers, we're looking for one additional adult. We've added that to kindergarten. We've gone from one to two in kindergarten.
No, but we've, it's the same number of teachers in total.
We've taken one away from another grade.
Right.
It's a zero-sum game.
Because last year we had two first grade teachers and next year we'll only have one first grade teacher, but we'll have two kindergarten teachers. So it's, it's a switch in a person.
Actually, it's the four, five multi-age is not in next year's plan. So this year we have a four, a four, five, and a fifth.
Well, the way, so the way I'm looking at it this way is we're going from one teacher in kindergarten with eighteen to two for twenty. Where a larger increase, maybe this is what you were talking about before is I think Jim brought it up in the sense of needs, would it make more sense, and I purely, I'm asking, to still have one kindergarten, but so you have two six, two seven, two eight? That makes sense?
Why don't you have more than twenty? In the kindergarten?
Think with a kindergarten.
Well, that's why I'm saying needs, like, let's say we.
You run into spatial issues when you have them all together too, because their activities are.
Well, that's what I'm sort of saying, what's the context of the, of the students? Are there significant numbers to into with needs in the sixth grade versus the kindergarten? It's a high-functioning kindergarten group. It's not necessarily apples and oranges in the sense of twenty, twenty-one ratio with kindergarten can be very reliable depending upon the group of kids, or twenty-eight to one in sixth grade could be all the kids, I used to teach sixth grade and they all had ADHD. I had eighteen. That was, that was tough. So, again, I, I think those contextual features matter. I'm just throwing it out there.
Is this something that we could look at after we got started in the fall as to whether or not we needed to add an ed tech to that class? Or is this something that we should decide now if we decided to leave the sixth grade and the twenty-eight students in one class?
You've given me enough guidance and again, one of the things I was concerned about was policy with the junior high as well as with the kindergarten. What I'm hearing though is you're, you're passionate about, about both. So I need to go back then and look at that sixth grade and see if I can meet their needs with the staff I have given those parameters. So that's what, I, I really just needed that feedback from you to make sure. You know, I am concerned about hitting twenty-four or twenty-five in kindergarten. At this time last year, we had thirteen kindergartners on our list and we ended up starting the school year with nineteen. So, so I, I am definitely concerned about that. I can wait for that feedback or give you feedback as to how Ken and I, and I'm gonna talk to the teachers about how I can address the needs of that.
At a June meeting?
At a June meeting.
Julie, we have.
That really should be.
Two teachers in here, one in the lower end. One in the junior high and could we hear from, though, their opinions, if you don't mind?
Yes, give us your opinion.
We don't wanna put you on the spot or anything, but yeah.
Too small K. Too small kindergarten. Definitely. I, I wouldn't hesitate to say that.
Being done at those levels now that wasn't done before.
It's a whole new world for them. Imagine that.
It's the base that, you know, and we have to have a strong foundation.
It won't work in the sixth grade if it doesn't work in the kindergarten.
Yes, I, I would not hesitate to arrange for an ed tech for sixth grade regardless of what you find as far as needs go, twenty-eight is a lot. And just finding a room for twenty-eight big bodies will be a challenge.
Yeah.
And I think as far as seventh and eighth go, they, they need to stay the way they are. You know, it's almost like, if you look at both ends of it, K is very specific. Seven, eight is very specific and the center part feels a little more flexible. I mean, I've been all over the place the last few years.
Right.
You know, and it feels a little easy to flex.
And that's what I'm used to, and I passed back. They had a lot, much larger schools, so that there was a lot of movement because you had four or five first graders, four or five second grade classes. So then you can just flex as the numbers come through. In our case, when you're as small as we are, you're gonna have these anomalies that I mentioned. And you have to deal with them for the one year. We'd like to have more students come to be part of our wonderful environment here. And, and we're buoyed up by the fact that it looks like we might even have twenty-two. We have twenty now that we know of. And we were worried just a few months ago that we're going the wrong way in terms of not enough students.
And when it comes to, when it comes to flexing, I think Patty has flexed about as much as I have.
Thank you so much. No, it's a wonderful thing.
It's been good for me personally. You know, I've grown a lot over the last five years.
Yeah, you have.
You know, it's been, it's been good. I would encourage anybody.
We benefited from it. My daughter had it twice.
Both of my kids have.
Dave, what is your opinion on the seventh and eighth grade situation?
Well, I was, I was one that was somewhat skeptical back when Dr. Rhodes and that, the school committee at that time was looking at this essentially looping and being very, being subject content specific and I have to, I have to say that it pains me I was wrong, but it has, it has far exceeded, I mean, if you look back, if you look back at, you know, a lot of different things. If you look at things socially, socially, emotionally, you look at the academic end of things. I know the test is, the testing is different, but our test scores, if you look at our test scores over the last five or six years, it is I think, honestly, I'm gonna brag, I think it's impressive right across the, right across the board with that. What, what I've seen is totally invaluable again is we, again, we can focus on that content and that content only. And what we can offer the kids and that is realistic to what they are gonna transition to into high school has been, has been invaluable. Also, having those kid, having those kids two years in a row in, in that context, I think, I mean, that has been absolutely not, that really totally surprised me, the impact of what we can do over the course of those, over the course of those two years. You know, can, under some of the different things that we as a staff and Trish has, have looked at, could some of that stuff be weaved in there? Yes, but as Trish said, we haven't found any real easy way. I mean, we've been truly racking our brains trying to look at these different combinations of six and even down to fifth and all these different, you know, these different combos and it hasn't, you know, it hasn't worked really well. You know, keep in mind that even though the classes would be small, we would still be teaching the same number of classes. They just, they're just smaller classes, which I know there's some, there is some conflicting research out there. But I know from my perspective as a science teacher, that if I can, if I can teach a smaller amount of kids might in my classroom, my science program, which is a mix of small group work and, and different stations and, and hands-on experiential, I can be more effective at it, you know, with twelve or fourteen than I can twenty-six, twenty-eight. As far as for the sixth grade situation, you know, if we're talking twenty-eight kids, it is, it is a lot of kids. I know with the dynamics that I'm not familiar with, but relying on things, some things that, that Trish has said and with the teacher that would be involved in it has said that if, you know, these rooms were originally designed for, I think it would, and you'll find it somewhere, just like you'll find somewhere, like you were saying, I think, Mary. It is documented somewhere for the kindergarten cutoff at twenty, twenty-one, whatever it is, okay? But they're designed for twenty-four, twenty-four kids. I know the twenty-four to one rate, but those rooms were designed per those state specs at that time for twenty-four kids. But one thing that that teacher said was, there, there's some possibilities where we do have some room in this building now that if I could utilize, if I could utilize another space adjacent to my space in one way or another, that now you're talking, you're, you're dealing with a spaceship, space issue, maybe with some ed tech assistance. And now you're talking about something that's much more doable. If you're just talking, if you're talking that a wall can make a big difference with the help of an ed tech, now, you know, the way you organize it, then you've got some potential to make it work. Now, I don't wanna speak out of turn either. These are things that we have been, you know, we've talked and talked about. And it may, when we were talking about it, it did make a lot of sense cuz we do have that space. You know, why limit ourselves to that, that's that room? We've got more space, a teacher, an ed tech, now, now we've got some potential to make it work. And again, I'm not real well-versed on kindergarten, but I do, but I do know this has come up many, many times over the years. As many of you who've been around the school for a long time. And that is why it is in writing somewhere about having that twenty, twenty cutoff, whatever it is. Is because exactly what we're talking about here today. That's why it is in writing somewhere. Jeanette, Jeanette was talking about it. She's, you know, she's right.
I mean, we talk about it every year when we talk about kindergarten testing. Twenty, twenty, twenty is always the number.
So, a request, so I, I'm, one is just with what I'm hearing, I'm, I'm happy to go with the recommendations. It sounds like Trish has what she needs, but I do recommend that we revisit this to talk about policy and not policy in the sense of there's just a, a, a blank number that we say, when it hits this number, it triggers this automatic hiring of somebody new. But it's kinda like what we're doing right now is we're, what variables, a policy which states, when this situation comes up, these are the variables we discuss. So for example, we just met with data, like if we were to look at the data and say, alright, the fifth grade students, I'm not remembering, I'm brain fried, but we might see that the fifth grade students coming to the sixth grade at this time have a significant gap in reading and writing, more so than other grades. Or right there, I am not gonna be a fan of that going, we wanna go lower on that one. So we consider the data, we consider special education needs. What are the variables we wanna consider to make? We might say that generally we wanna keep a ratio of twenty to one, but we will also consider these things. I would like it written down. What are the things we look at? Data again, but what are the data we look at to make an informed decision that is in the best interest of the students? In some situations, twenty will be way too high. In some situations, we could go to twenty-five. If they're, you know, I could see a class where they're all like nine, you know, they're exceeding in all the standards, heck, you can go to forty.
That's precisely what we looked at.
Yeah.
Well, what they looked at, we didn't, I didn't have a part in it, but before the present seventh grade as it was coming up through. They looked at the data, the information that they had on the deficiencies and the, and the, and the, you know, dynamics of that group in making that decision to keep it as that double class and that, in having them now as their seventh grade teacher. That was one of the, one of the best decisions whenever that was made down below. That was one of the best decisions that was made. Because exactly what you said, that the data, the dynamics, it, it indicated, whoa, we've got to. Got to do that with this group. Where in another group necessarily, it wouldn't have been, been like that.
And I think we're, we're at the place now where we're, we're getting more and more data on individual kids all the way up through the grades. So it gives us a better opportunity to make those kinds of decisions because, you know, you can look at it and say, oh, those teachers are gonna have so many. This isn't really about the teachers, I'm sorry, but this is really about what's gonna work best for the kids.
Thank you.
You know?
I think we have what we need and I appreciate the comments all the way around. We're gonna go to work on it even more closely. Work with the teachers and look at the specifications and test scores and the results that we have in the sixth graders. Or the fifth graders coming in, sixth grade, excuse me, so, thank you for your help.
Your job anyway. We've, we've had our two cents worth.
It's exactly what I needed from you. Thank you so much.
Alright, let's go on to ten-two, which is consideration of the donation of Spanish curriculum books at, at the request of Rachel Gishko.
I have a little note from Rachel that you may or may not have seen. I think that, did she send it to the whole board or did, I know that Mrs. Stanton saw it. It says, just a reminder about asking the school board about possibly donating the Spanish materials to a very poor school held under a tarp in Costa Rica. I don't know where she found that school. Well, that sounds like a school in true need. But it, but it also, it's the, on the other side, but I don't know if our, Trish can tell us, I don't know if our curriculum materials, Spanish materials are are appropriate for tomorrow if we were gonna reestablish that program. I hate to have, have us say that we'd never reestablish it, but I'm not sure if those are the materials we'd use if we did reestablish it.
Is that what this board is thinking moving forward, that we're just not gonna?
Well, that's, I think this is a springboard out of the conversation.
I do too.
I think that's a Cadillac worth having.
Me too. What fight.
Are you talking about reinstating the Spanish?
Foreign language.
We've talked about it before and it never got back in the budget and nobody wanted to. I don't know.
I never get to vote on that. I never get to vote as, as a resident. It was never put before the people. It was just taken out of the budget.
I know.
Because a handful of people screamed and yelled.
I know.
That was a fantastic, we hired some staff members here that cost more than that whole program, kindergarten through eighth grade.
Yeah.
Why?
It was a great program.
And that's what my concerns. So, so Rachel brought it to my attention that there's a lot of material sitting up on a shelf and now it's been three years, five years.
Been more than that.
So if you were to reinstate it, which I would love that you would, I don't know that this material would any longer be.
But we could find that out, couldn't we?
Yes.
And that's what I would want to know, that, so, so that was the question is, you know, should I box it up and label it and save it? Should I let it be given away? I mean, we never give away. I mean, we never give away materials just, you know, that, that have been part of the curriculum just randomly. So it was a, a question. Um, if we're not ready to let go of the material because we don't know if it'd be valuable, then I will put it in
Seven kids from the eighth, eight years ago, the eighth grade class, seven kids graduated from college this past weekend. One of them with a master's degree. Every one of those kids, I know them, I talked to them, have benefited from that foreign language. There's, there's four of them that are going to use it in their life moving forward, you know? Look at Ted Kraszak's kids.
I know.
She's using it in her life, I mean.
And we, you know, the thing of it is, we, we sent our kids from here into Sanford High School testing out of Spanish one and going into Spanish two.
Right, that were
I mean, that's how effective the program was here, so they were able to, to get more out of their high school
That was your thing, Mary, years ago, yellow one in the very beginning, fighting and fighting for that.
I guess what we're saying is
But I believed in it from kindergarten on.
You know, we, we did have that taken away from us, but we were never very happy about it, and we're still not very happy about it.
But it never was put in the budget duty, for the people to vote on. It was never, it was just
It was taken out with the Warren Finance Committee.
It doesn't, yeah, but you still, you, this is your budget, you could have put that in there, they, all they do is make a recommendation. It never made it to the floor for me to argue or fight for or vote for or any other parents. It was just removed.
So it sounds like there's interest though in having a conversation to
Can we just have it?
Yeah.
Build that into, we, we would have to have the conversations to build it into the next year's budget.
Why not?
And it sounds like there's, it's worth doing.
All right, but my thing also is with modern technology, I don't know why we can't bring a Spanish teacher from Sanford who's someone in the, you know, teaching it there, can't Skype or whatever they do, go to meeting, all these things they have, and just have it here.
That's part of the discussion, you know, I mean, that's part of the new program to get it back, I mean, how valuable
I would be so excited if you would bring it back. My simple question today is, do you want me to box and save?
Yes.
Or do we let this go and whatever new program we get comes with it?
How much room do you need to box and save till you can find out? I mean, is it that big an issue?
It's not, it's not a big an issue to me at all, it's just that Rachel wanted to see it go to good use if we're not going to use it.
Is there somewhere, Andy, you could
Couldn't Irene come down and
I could definitely ask Irene to do it.
Because she's an acting resident, she was our Spanish teacher, and she, I bet she'd be more than willing to come down and she's very up to date, obviously, with still what's going on in foreign, foreign language education. Ask her what her thoughts are and I bet you'd get a good gage.
See if there's good
If we were sitting there.
Okay, and I, you know, I do, I do think her, I think her thoughts were very good, very caring and very noble. And I, I just think from the discussion tonight, we're not ready to, uh, to toss them out.
I think it was a wonderful request to catalyze the conversation.
Right.
Good.
Okay.
I will email Rachel and Irene.
And tell, tell Rachel that we appreciate her thoughts and that we're not being non-believable, benevolent.
She may take a lot of the credit if we get the program back.
That's it.
That's right, maybe she can.
She spurred this conversation, that's all.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
For personnel items.
I shall second that.
To go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Right.
Second it. Thank you very much, everybody.
All those in favor?
Oh, thanks, Kim.